Do you have, um, Lucinda, do you have some of these cards?
Yeah, they're out in the, do you need extras?
Well, why don't we have, put, put, put some on the, put some on the podium, please. He's over there, my soccer buddy's here, but I'm waiting, I'm supposedly, Luke and Ms. Loretano are gonna be here. So, you guys ready, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, okay? Calling to order the regular meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, December 16th, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please let the record show that Commissioner Loretano and Commissioner Swatzer are not here, hopefully they will join us. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of November 18th, please?
So move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Miller, a second from Commissioner Williams, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, five zero. Okay, public comments, if anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight, this is the time to do that, and seeing none, we will move on to the next item of business. Ex parte communications.
None.
No ex parte communications, all right, first order of business, I'm gonna open the public hearing, this is case 093500004, Montessori in the Park Special Use Permit. I have a number of special, I have a number of speaker requests, if anybody would like to speak on an agenda item, there are cards both up here at the podium and outside, and we, just for the record, we'd ask you to fill out one of these cards, but we will recognize anybody even if they don't have a card filled out. So, without further ado, Mr. Burningham will make the presentation, let her rip, sir.
Thank you. Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, and members of the public, this is a request for approval of special use zoning for a Montessori in the Park preschool and elementary school, placed in aerial photo exhibit showing the location, so it's in the Palm Valley Commerce Park Commercial Center, this is generally north of the northwest corner of McDowell and Litchfield, it's behind the Macaroni Grill Restaurant, the property is zone PAD and is subject to the city's general commercial C2 zoning district. And you can see here, the surrounding land uses and businesses include, to the north, you can see there's a vacant lot, and you also have the Hampton Inn right here, to the south is a vacant lot in the Palm Valley Office Park, and to the east, as I mentioned, the Macaroni Grill Restaurant, and to the west is the Fairways Palm Valley Driving Range, which is also zone general commercial. And so, the vehicular access for the church will be provided by three existing driveways from Litchfield Road and two existing driveways from McDowell Road. And now, just zooming in on the site plan, the school is purchasing a 1.6 acre lot for the development of three buildings, and one of the buildings will be used for preschool, one for an elementary school, and one for a multipurpose type room. This site will be developed with about 46 parking spaces, typical landscaping throughout the site, and, and also internally, and as you can see here, they kind of have an internal, kind of a play area, there is a garden area, a, an active play area, and there will also be a totlot type feature with a covered shade canopy for the children to utilize. And now, just some of the conceptual building elevations, the proposed hours of operation for this use will be Monday through Friday, you know, the typical school times, 8:00 AM to 3:15, and certain grades will have staggered start times. In the staff report, we noted that the planned school uses that are identified in the narrative for this proposal, they're customary and typical for educational institutions of this, of this type, and this use should not be detrimental to the surrounding commercial properties if it's proposed as outlined. And I do, I do want to refer you to one stipulation, stipulation number one, the school will not negatively impact the operations at the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, however, consistent with some of the recent submittals and applications you've seen, an assembly occupancy such as the school is, is considered a noise sensitive use, and so we do have stipulation number one, the church is two miles away, away from the runway, but we've added the stipulation to make certain that the owner will release and discharge the city and the airport from any liability, any complaints that, that may be had from operations at the airport. And finally, in regards to the citizen review process, we did take part in an alternative citizen review notification process, so we sent letters to property owners within 500 feet of the property, and staff has not received any comments or any inquiries about this application to date. And that concludes the staff presentation, staff is available to answer any questions you might have, there are also several representatives of the school who can also answer any questions that you might have.
Does the applicant wish to make a comment, whoever is representing the applicant? Is that Mike Hirth?
Yes.
Please identify yourself for the, for the record.
Mike Hirth, I'm the principal of 101 West Commercial Advisors, the developer on the project, and what I really want to do is, other than to say I think it's gonna be a great asset for the community, I'd like to have one of the members of the Montessori in the Park come up to really tell you a little bit about it.
Okay, I have three speakers, so I'll ask, sure, why don't you bring your speaker up first?
Yeah, and that's all I wanted to say, really.
That's fine, okay.
You actually have my card. I'm one of your three.
Are you?
Tammy Chevay.
Okay, great. Here. Pass that, pass that over to the secretary, please. Please, I'm sorry.
My name is Tammy Chevay, I'm one of the managers of the school, I'm also one of the founders and a parent of an alumni and a current student, and I wanted to give you a little bit of our background so you understand why the school came to be, why we're looking for expansion in the city of Goodyear. Five years ago, when my children were in preschool, they were, happened into an amazing program where they would come home each day and I'd have to Google in order to keep up with them. My little girl came home one day and she said, mommy, my favorite artist this year is Georgia O'Keeffe. I said, Georgia O'Keeffe, that's great, honey, and then she wanted to talk about it, so I had to go Google, just to be able to talk to a three-year-old budding art student. That developed into learning about the continents, learning about the world, learning about all of these concepts that were outside of the realm of learning my colors, learning my counting, learning my ABCs. What I found out is that Montessori education provides this amazing base for our kids, that not only do they learn educationally, but they also learn socially. As they've developed into now our elementary program that we started to accommodate these children, the normal elementary kids get into a scuffle and it could become pushing, shoving, you know, even worse than that in some of our public schools, our children go and sit in the peace corner, they may elect to bring in someone to help them, but they take it on themselves to come to a peaceful resolution to their issues. Our main founder, my father, John Anderson, he wears a button on a regular basis that says, may peace prevail on earth. The reason we started this school is for that to really happen, it has to start with our kids, and our school has shown us that that can be a reality so very easily if we only had the space. We've spent the last three years looking for the ideal space, and we believe we've found it within the city of Goodyear. And, you know, with your assistance, we'd like to continue to offer our program to the many, many children that have been waiting on our waiting list, because the facilities we were able to obtain when we opened were not sufficient, and we knew they weren't sufficient. And this property will let us serve so many more children and offer this amazing experience to more kids and more families.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker?
I have a question.
Where are you currently located?
Right now, we're split between two locations, we're in, we're north of the northwest corner of Camelback and Dizart, in the Veranda Commons Medical Plaza, and we're also in the Indian School Crossing Strip area on the south side of Indian School Road between El Mirage and Dizart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Polly Franklin, I'm currently one of the primary teachers at Montessori in the Park, and I just wanted a chance to let you know that I am a fifth generation Arizona native, I also grew up in Litchfield Park in Goodyear, and so it's been my home forever. I'm also one of the few that can say that I also was educated through the Montessori School, and I feel really privileged to be a teacher at Montessori in the Park and know for a fact that it would do, do nothing but benefit the city of Goodyear if we were able to build this facility.
All right, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lisa Kusich, I am not only a parent and PTO president at Montessori in the Park, but I'm also a Goodyear resident, and I feel it would be a tremendous asset to have this school come to Goodyear, not only for the children of the West Valley, but for the community in general, so I want to officially lend my support.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment on this case? All right, seeing none?
A question, I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of the, Tammy, I don't know, I can't pronounce your last name, I do, Chevaz, forgive me for not pronouncing it correctly, I have just one question, before your elementary, and let me just preface my statement by saying, Montessori, that's where my two grandsons go back east, and it is a wonderful program. Here is my, my question, you're gonna have up to 12, 10 to 12-year-olds, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And they are only going to leave by a parent? In other words, they are not leaving the building unescorted, that is the only concern I have, because I know what 10, 11, and 12-year-olds do. So, my question is, is there a bus, is there, how will they get those 10, because they can walk home?
Not our students, ma'am.
Okay, so they will not be walking home?
Yes, security is of the utmost importance, and parents have to come pick them up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done.
Works for me.
Is the net on the golf driving range high enough to keep the kids from getting hit by golf balls while they're out in the play yard?
I think so. That event, that golf range eventually will go away, I believe, someday, you know, is that correct there, Mr. Director? Then we'd have to relocate the cellphone towers that are on the posts there?
Yes, it's my understanding that, that probably, that property will probably be redeveloped at some time in the future, I don't know what timetable is.
The Montessori School is aware that the golf driving range will go away someday when we're all grandparents. Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment on this? Seeing none, close the public hearing, can I have a motion to approve this case?
Commissioner Gelsner.
Ah, go on, I'll defer to you.
Thank you. I move we approve case number 093500004 with stipulations as presented by Mr. Burningham.
All right, I have a motion, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, a second from Commissioner Miller, any comments from the commission, other than this will be a great addition to the city of Goodyear, from the chair? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, five zero, thank you very much. First time I've gotten applause in six years. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing on case number 0920000011, Australia Golf Village Parcels 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5. Katie Wilkin is gonna make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission, the city has received a request from Newland Communities to amend the Golf Village PAD for Parcels 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5. These three parcels are located along West Star Drive in the Golf Village Community. The Golf Village PAD was adopted by council on April 13th, 1999. The current PAD allows for maximum unit buildout on these three parcels of 452 units and a density of 3.7 dwelling units per acre. And these are the three parcels, 5.1, 5.3, and 5.5. There are existing residents located just south of parcel 5.5, and planned developments located south of the three parcels and adjacent to 5.1. The PAD amendment proposes increasing the lot count by 33 units and increasing the density to 4.1 dwelling units per acre. Here's the conceptual lot plan. Single-family dwellings on 60-foot wide lots are proposed for parcel 5.1, which is surrounded by natural desert terrain. Single-family dwellings on 50-foot wide lots are proposed for parcel 5.3, which is surrounded by the golf course and desert area. And single-family dwellings on 50-foot wide lots are proposed for the west portion of 5.5, which is the yellow area, which is also surrounded by golf course. And attached single-family dwellings on 45-foot wide lots are proposed for the east portion of 5.5, which is surrounded by the golf course and within proximity of existing residents. And this single-family attached dwelling on a 45-foot wide lot is similar to a duplex on a 90-foot wide lot, but they're gonna be individually owned parcels. Two-story dwellings are proposed on all three parcels. To minimize the impact of garages on smaller lots, 60% of the lots must use an alternative garage placement including medium or deep recessed, side-loaded, or tandem. 25% of the homes are required to have front porches, and the community is proposed to have detached sidewalks. The original Golf Village PAD zoning allowed for a total of 3,349 dwellings to be built within the Golf Village Community. 86% of those had a minimum lot size of 50 foot, feet or less, and 9% were permitted to have attached dwellings. Golf Village has developed much less densely than was allowed by the zoning, and if you look on the chart on page four of the staff report, which is right here, you can see what the original zoning allowed, 3,349 lots. Currently, 1,554 dwellings have been developed, and all of those have had lot sizes over 50 feet. Newland Communities had a segmentation study conducted to determine the appropriate mix of land, lot sizes within the community, and this study showed that there was a need for more diversity and smaller lot sizes within Australia. With the proposed amendment, the buildout of Golf Village would be 2,225 dwellings, with 5% of those lots being attached, 8% being less than 50 feet wide, and 37% being 50 to 60 feet wide. And so to summarize that, on parcel 5.1, currently allowed are single-family dwellings on 50-foot wide lots with a 70-unit max buildout. What's proposed is single-family dwellings on 60-foot wide lots, but increasing the maximum units to 111. On parcel 5.3, the current PAD again allows 50-foot wide lots, and with 58 units permitted, and what they're proposing is, again, 50-foot wide lots, but increasing the maximum number of lots by 23. And on parcel 5.5, currently allowed are single-family dwellings on 55, 50-foot wide lots. The west portion of the 5.5 wouldn't change, but they are proposing changing the east portion to the single-family attached unit, but they are proposing decreasing the maximum allowable units in 5.5 by 27. A citizen review meeting was held on November 17th, and approximately 16 residents were in attendance. The majority of these residents lived south of parcel 5.5, in this area, right here, across from the proposed attached units, and that property was developed as single-story, single-family lots on 80-foot wide lots. Overall, the residents were not in favor of the proposal and expressed concern with the proposed density, the placement of two-story homes, the lot width, and the proposed duplex product. Although the zoning of two-story homes on 50-foot wide lots has been in place since 1999, the residents stated that they were told by the home builder that the area would be developed as custom lots, and so they were surprised to find out what the actual zoning of the property was. After the meeting, staff received several phone calls and letters from concerned residents, and the correspondents repeated the concerns we heard at the meeting about the proposed product development standards and density. After hearing concerns of the residents, Newland Communities has been working with staff, they did increase the building separation between the proposed attached units to try and create more openness and preserve some of the views the current residents have. They also decided to hold a second citizen meeting to try and alleviate some of the residents' concerns. That meeting was held on December 8th, and about a half dozen residents were in attendance. Several new exhibits were provided to the residents, and I believe David Prescott has some of those available. The residents were still concerned with the proposal, and mostly concerned with the height of the buildings and the duplex product. However, staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendment. The amendment is increasing the density by 33 units, but the overall buildout of the Golf Village Community has been reduced by more than 1,000 units. The parcel closest to the residents is being proposed for a reduction in dwelling units. The design guidelines contained within the PAD amendment provide for an increased level of architecture and design quality from that required in the original Golf Village PAD, which will increase the overall quality of the three parcels. That concludes staff's presentation, I'd be happy to take any questions, and I know the applicant is available too.
Okay, questions of staff? Questions, 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 none? Mr. David Prescott, do you want to make a presentation or talk to the commission? Or do, is your, your mouthpiece wanna, need to come and talk to us?
Mr. Chairman, members, Commissioner David Prescott with Newland Communities, 2850 East Camelback Road, Suite 300, Phoenix, Arizona, usually I do not speak to the commission, but this time I think because I've have, I do have residents who are concerned, I would like to go ahead and do a, a presentation.
Okay.
I think the first thing I'd like to point out, and Katie alluded to some of this, I'll go through it quickly, is, this is, this is the, this is the, we had a segmentation study done, it was originally completed by Sullivan Group, and earlier this year in March, and we had them go back through and take another look at the segmentation study, and finish it off again in, in November, and the purpose of the segmentation study was to go through and identify, take a look at the analysis of the development market we're in, which is the Southwest Valley, including all of Goodyear, and that includes looking at all the household makeups, the life stages that people were in, the Tennessee, whether they're owner occupied, or they, or they are renter occupied, their income levels, and we went through and identified what their demand for housing is going to be over the next five years, and the reason why we're doing all this, because when the economy changed, the market changed dramatically, and we're trying to catch back up to see exactly what's going on. So, what we're looking for is to identify any mismatch between what we have planned and what we have entitled, and what the actual housing market is, and what we found is there's a mismatch in Golf Village, in the fact that we didn't have small lots, and we didn't have, for, for mature families, and we didn't have lots and properties for empty nesters. So, what we did, we're providing an application to go through and try to fix that. So, as Katie pointed out, on the first, and the table is showed in your staff report, but I think the last column, which is proposed, kinda shows, I guess the original zoning shows this complete lack of diversity in Golf Village, very small, high-density product, that's why you had 33 over 3,300 units planned there. What's been developing is you're getting a lot of 60s, 70s, and 80s, but you're not getting any of the, the smaller lots at, at the, the smaller end, and you didn't have any custom lots at the high end. What we're going through and proposing is we remedy that and create a complete diversity within Golf Village to create the proper housing mix to deliver the product for people who are looking for housing, and to show you exactly how we, how we did that, what we've done is, this is, I think this is exhibit G in your staff, in your PAD booklet, but what we've done is gone through, and if you remember, the last 18 months to two years, for everybody who was on a commission back that far, we started off by going through and adding three custom home subdivisions. The first one was up in the north end, just north of the 17th hole, the golf course, we added eight custom homes, these will be the most expensive residential lots in all of Australia, right here, these, these eight lots right here, then we went through in 5.2 and added custom homes in a small canyon in here, and that was just finished earlier, just earlier this year, and we added custom homes down here in 5.1, it's called 5.14 through 5.16, there's three canyons in here, we added custom homes in here, so we added the custom homes to add that large lot diversity that was missing. Parcel 5.9 is owned by New, New West, I'm trying to think, New West Bank, South West, New, Newfound, I can't remember the, the name of the bank exactly, but anyway, they own the property, this is actually zoned for 12 units an acre, they have a plan for duplexes and triplexes, and they're actually gonna develop it around seven units an acre, they're in the process of trying to sell that property. So that's right across the golf course from, from where the, the residents that were at the meeting along Narromore Drive were attending. Then we're coming in, and we're, we're putting in for mature families, 60-foot wide product, which may be or may not be gated, we're designing it in the plant, and I submitted the preliminary plant today, but we're designing it so it can be gated, but we're gonna kinda leave that up to the home builder. On 5.3 and 5.5, these are designed for the empty nesters, we do not have a specific product in Australia for the empty nester crowd, it's a very big market, is a market where, where not only do they like the villas, but they really enjoy the vacation homes or the winter homes or, or second properties, or, you know, just for, people wanna sell the bigger home and move into a smaller home, that's what they're after. These are both gated communities, they're, and all three of these properties are completely surrounded by either natural open space or golf course, and not immediately adjacent to anybody. And to illustrate that, I guess what I'd like to do is go to the PowerPoint, and, and just go through, and what I'd like to do in the PowerPoint is kind of go through some of the neighborhood issues that we had, first of all, the, the major issues the neighborhood had were the unit count and the density change, there was a hill, and, and then I introduced the watch, but there was a hill they were concerned about us taking out, and there was views, their views across the golf course and what they're gonna see. So, in terms of the, the density count, you know, the original PAD was pointing out, you gotta, you have over 3,300 units, our amendment takes us down to around 2,200, that will be the end of Golf Village, we are not intending to build the other 1,100 units, we're just, we're not gonna do it. On the original three parcels, we did, it was at 452 units, we're going to 484 units, part of the problem is because we're going back and trying to fix the fact that when they developed most of Golf Village, they developed it without, without a mix, they just, every, all the home builders were pretty much kinda clustered in the middle with the 60s, 70s, 80s, and 87s, and weren't hitting the, the diversity we need, so that we're trying to correct that. And, and the density we are proposing in those three parcels is a little bit higher than, than what's there now. So I think we've already kinda beat this one to death between Katie and myself, so I'm not gonna go through this, this particular slide. On this one, I guess what I'd like to point out is that, and it's kinda tough, because I don't have a thing to point with, but in between, on 5.5, between the east and the west, what east and the west, what we did was, when we came in, there's a hilltop on the east half of five point five, just east of where, just to the right of where it says five point five, there's a hilltop there. And when I first came in, staff asked me if I could do something with a hilltop. Well, the hilltop is not, it's only about twenty feet high, it's not a twenty percent slope hill. We did take a look at it, but what was going to happen is I was going to have to go through and add four thousand eight hundred and fifty linear feet of concrete retaining wall and put houses around it, which would have one- and two-story houses, which means that you wouldn't be able to see it, and you really wouldn't be able to use it, and actually could end up, I thought it could end up being a problem rather than amenity. So what we did was, we went over to this wash, which runs in between five point five, the west half and the east half, and at huge wash, and I'll show you a second, we opened up that open space and put in a trail system and some little parks and stuff in there to kind of open that area up. And then, like I said, we are gating five point three, five point five, five point one may or may not be gated. The reason why we're coming in with this now is we fact, we're just now building that West Star Drive that's shown in this illustration. The residents commented that they had been told it was going to be custom homes, and other residents said they understood this area was not going to be developed at all. The property's always been zoned what it is today, and nobody could go in there and develop anything because there was no access to the area. West Star Drive was not completed. We just, are just now finishing off West Star Drive, and it will not be open until July of next year. On the hill in the wash, this was the hill that they're talking about. Now, it looks very, very small, and it is about twenty feet high, but when you stand down on their property, the property, this property, the subject property slopes upwards, and that hill from their backyard looks much bigger than there, and as a matter of fact, it blocks the view of some of the bigger hills further to the north. So at first, I couldn't figure out what they were really referring to, because when you're on a property, you're up higher than they are, but when you're down on their property, in their defense, this hill looks much bigger. So this is the hill we were taking out, and there is a hill on the north end that, what staff has us to do is, when we agree to take out the smaller hill, to move the houses down off of this hill, which is the golf tee for the seventeenth hole. And so you've got the custom homes off to the left, and you've got, we took our homes and moved them down off to the bottom of that hill, so we're leaving that hill. And then this is the wash in its current condition. It's a fairly large wash, it's a nice wash. We can take out some of the dead vegetation, re-vegetate, put in a trail system, and put in some pocket parks in there, and open that area up. And that's what we're going to use as the transition between the fifty-foot detached and the villas, the attached villas.
I have a question, David. If this is a gated community, will the wash be open for all residents of Australia as an amenity, or will it just be open for the people who live in the gated community?
I believe that even the current community across the golf course from us, which is the residents that were at the meeting, is gated. I think that's for their use. I think anything inside those gates is intended for residents.
So in other words, if you live in Golf Village, you can walk through any of the trails in any of the units?
Right. We have trails we design within the subdivisions. We also have trails that are designed within the community, which are very extensive, and those are open, and they literally wouldn't, somebody who doesn't live in a gated community really doesn't need to go into the gated community, and I think that's the idea of the gate. So I would say, no, this would be for these residents only.
Okay.
Then on the views across from the golf course, I think the biggest issue, and I really made a huge mistake at the first meeting, because I didn't realize until, this is the current neighborhood, and the residents directly across from where I've illustrated the villas, that's the residents that probably have, are the most impacted by this. The minimum distance between existing home and a proposed villa would be three hundred and thirty feet, which is a little more than a football field. And then the second illustration I have, it shows the distance four hundred and seventy-five, which is about one and a half football fields, and the third one is about two football fields. Between the homes and the golf course, there is a large, there's a wash, I can't say it's a large wash, there's a wash, and there's some vegetation going up there, so not in all cases can you see directly across the golf course, but, you know, there's some really nice vistas looking across north into this property. What I wanted to show on this one was, when you come in with the villas, the homes that are there are in eighty-foot wide lots, fifteen-foot separation between the houses, and you've got sixty-five-foot wide houses. The villas are on ninety-foot lots, and the units are seventy feet wide, so the, when they're looking across the golf course, you're basically seeing one for one, house for house, looking across the golf course, and that would be the worst-case scenario. And what that would look like is, it took PowerPoint, or not PowerPoint, took Photoshop, I took, I'm standing at the backyard of the houses shooting across to the proposed property where the, where these villas are going to be, and this is illustrating what one- and two-story houses are. Obviously, I don't have the architecture of the villas, so I don't know, but I did show what it's two-story houses would look like across the wash and across the golf course, and that is on the location, these houses that we're proposing aren't going to be ready on the golf course. I pushed them back off the golf course because some people don't hit so good, but, so this shows one- and two-story homes and kind of what it looked like. And then this is another view, looking a little bit further to the west on a golf course, looking across, and I think, there is, that one house on the right there is a two-story home, and I think they're concerned that the homes coming in there would have a negative impact on their view across the property. If I could switch real quick to just the overhead again for a second, I just want to show something. One thing that the residents were, when they were talking about custom homes, I was trying to explain to them that a lot of our custom homes, the last four out of five custom homes that I've approved are two-story. This is an example of the last custom home I approved. They're usually, we have one, have one, one story, which is on parcel fifty-nine, up by the lakes, but most of the custom homes we're getting are two-story because of the topography of the property, and they're running around five thousand square feet livable and a little bit larger. So I just wanted to go to that. Now, if I can go back and finish off my PowerPoint. And this is example of, these are villas or duplexes on McCormick Ranch in Scottsdale. I'm looking, I'm standing a hundred yards or a football field away from these houses to show you what they would look like with absolutely nothing in the way. And each one of those are, each building is actually two units, but they're all built, they look like one house. When you're looking on the property and you're driving the property, they look like one house, but they're actually two living units. And I saw them all over Sun City, and, I mean, they're extremely popular with empty nesters. They're a lock-and-leave type scenario. And what I would like to point out, and then I'm done with my presentation, is the P A D zoning district that we're operating under, the section of three point five point two says that residential neighborhoods shall include a range of types and styles, which is what we're trying to do. And then the next section talks about, if you come in with smaller lots, less than fifty-five hundred square feet, then you need to do certain things. One is provide a mixed housing types, which we are doing, provide usable open space, which we are doing. Lots have to be internal development, which we are doing, and the garages are not dominating, which Katie talked about. We are proposing the design guidelines, which don't allow the garages to be the front-loaded stuff. We're proposing much more stringent design guidelines, which are also Australia's design guidelines. We require these design guidelines for all size houses. And that concludes my comments. I just, I do have one thing, I do agree with the staff's recommendation, although I would comment on stipulation number five refers to preliminary plant, and if it's okay, I would like to make, change that stipulation five to read final plant. We are making progress with the city on water demand and developing additional water resources to the property, but I'd really like to continue the planning process, and I know that when you get the final plant, you have to show all the water resources and everything else, so if that's okay with staff, I'd like to...
Staff have an issue with that? Katie?
No, we've talked about that change. I'm sorry, I didn't mention it myself. That's okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Williams?
I don't know if it's a question or a comment. You know, it's a good plan. I mean, you guys always have good plans. You do your work well. But, you know, I think everybody here would like to see something to kick-start the housing market, especially down in Australia Mountain Ranch, and with the housing market in the doldrums, maybe you need to market your properties, give more space and more house and more rather than less. But, you know, you have your studies and your economists that probably know the market better than I do. It just seems to me that you ought to be doing more to, that it would take more to get people to go that distance in this market, to get some momentum started, momentum started with more people moving down there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, we have lots and lots and lots of large lots and seventy-foot lots, and we don't have any of the smaller lots. We don't have any, period. We have none. That is, part of the diversity issue is you want to provide a mix of housing stocks to not just address the needs of the people that are here today, but the needs of the people that aren't here yet. So I appreciate your comment, but I could go through and show you where we have existing finished lots, and we are getting offers on them of the sixties and the seventies. We got the customs, we have all the larger stuff. We're missing the smaller stuff, which there's also a market for that. But I do agree that making it smaller doesn't mean you can do a, not do a good job, you have to do a good job. You have to make the neighborhood look, you know, viable. And also, this is Golf Village, this Golf Village is the priciest area in the Australia project, so, I mean, you can't come in and cut corners, you just can't.
Thank you.
These are going to be small, expensive houses, not big, expensive houses. They're still going to be expensive. Other questions, other comments of the applicant?
I'm just wondering where they're going to buy their groceries.
Yes. Commissioner Loretano is absent, and, you know, we, that, yeah, the grocery store development is an issue, David.
Nothing is more painful to us personally than that issue right there, and we're still working on that with Kitchell. I mean, how many times do you see that kind of shopping center completely developed and nothing in it, so...
We look forward to you coming here with a successful application that we can move right along. Other questions of the applicant? Okay. Does anybody, anybody from the public like to make a comment? Please come up, identify yourself for the commission, and make your comments, sir.
Oh, good.
That's fine, you can just give it to one of the staff members. Please identify yourself for the record.
Okay, I'm, excuse me, I'm Paul Kramer. I'm one of the residents on West Narromore, which would back up into the village five point five parcel, on the West Narromore. My house would be about four hundred feet, okay, from where the proposed duplexes are. My comment is that when we actually originally acquired the house, you know, through T W Lewis, we paid premiums for a view of the golf course and the view of the ridgeline, the mountains. By putting a potentially thirty-foot-high duplex building four hundred feet away, basically will completely eliminate any view, or the ninety percent of the view of the ridgeline from the West Narromore houses, okay? And those West Narromore houses, as David said, you know, the area is one of the more pricey areas, and actually, the housing on West Narromore is one of the more pricey, non-custom, semi-custom areas within that area. So what you're doing is you're eliminating a complete view of the ridgeline, okay, as well as what you're going to end up seeing from West Narromore is basically just a wall of houses. When you think about a potentially thirty-foot-high house, which is the way I understand the application, said that the height limitation could be thirty feet, seventy feet wide, with potentially detached garage, which could be ten feet from the lot line in the back, so you're just, you're basically creating a wall of, a wall of housing there. What I've done is, and I'm not, I'm not an architect, so I'm not going to swear completely by all the measurements that I've done, but what I have here is, I don't know...
He'll come up in a minute. There it is.
Okay. What I've done here is, this is a view from the back of my house. When I'm talking about ridgeline, this is one of the larger hills that is back there that is going to stay. It's actually on the other side of the far golf course, so that hill will stay. What I've done here is I've tried to lay out what the pot, the potential height, okay, and the blockage of the views, okay, by various different housing. You can see right here, that's actually me standing right there, and I went over there to stand there just so I could get a relativity on height. I'm six feet tall, so, you know, think of that as me being six feet tall, four hundred feet from the back of my house, okay? This line here is eighteen feet. I just tripled my height and said, that's probably approximately the height of a one-story. This line up here is thirty feet, which is what I saw in the application, is the height limitation, which says that the ridgeline view from the Narromore area, at least from my house, okay, would basically be completely eliminated. So the, so what we had seen originally, and were in some cases told by the builder, would be completely different. What I've done here is, with the assumption of a seventy-foot-wide house, with the assumption of twenty feet between the housing, and if I, again, I look at the original application, and I heard before that maybe there's some changes in the original application, but according to the original application, if you look at tip-outs on the housing, the separation between the house could be as less as, as little as ten feet. I made an assumption here of twenty feet, put a two-floor house here, single-story house here, just to give you an idea of the wall of housing, because that we will end up viewing, losing the ridgeline, okay? If there's two-story houses, they're allowed there. This is primarily the objections I had in the two meetings that Katie referred to earlier.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any comment, any questions of the last speaker?
Is it four hundred feet or four hundred yards?
Four hundred feet, I'm sorry.
It's four hundred feet?
Basically, David had done a measurement that said four hundred and forty feet from the back of my house to the back of the house there. If you look at, and my house is thirty feet from the back line, so that's saying from, if I'm sitting in my yard, the house would be somewhere around four hundred, ten feet to the back of the house over there. Now, I am not the closest area, there's an area that's closer, I think you said it was around three hundred feet. Three hundred and thirty. Okay? So if you moved a little bit further down Narromore, it actually gets a little closer.
Could you give it to me in terms of a football field, because then I can visualize it better?
Three hundred, three hundred feet is a football field.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So you had the two end zones and...
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak? Come up, please give your card to the staff member over there. Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Patricia Kramer. I'm Paul's wife. We moved to Goodyear because we love the farms, we like the ruralness, and we loved Estrella Mountain because we had desert and trees and cactus behind us and beautiful mountains, totally different from New York, where we came from. At this point, we realize this is all a done deal, and we're going to lose our view, but we would like you all to realize that you've ruined our property values. We're not happy about duplexes going in behind us. We do have high-end houses, and I don't care how high-end the duplexes are going to be, they're still duplexes, they're not single-story homes. We were told by the Estrella Mountain Home Finding Center that there would be a few scattered custom homes behind us. We didn't have a problem with that, but the density we're talking about today is a lot, and it is taking our view, and we're not happy about it. So I guess we'd like consideration to think about at least putting in one-story homes as opposed to two. That would help a little. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to speak on this matter? Yes, please come up.
Hello. My name is Tom Mineo. I live at one eight zero seven six, West Narromore Road. I'm a neighbor of the Kramers. I live a little bit further east of them, more toward the area that has only three hundred feet between the back of my house and where the duplexes are thought to commence. I just wanted to mention, I support definitely the Kramer's position with regard to how our view and the back of our homes will change. Additionally, I wanted to mention that Mr. Prescott indicated... wanted to mention that Mr. Prescott indicated that due to diversity, that we want to offer a different product to different markets. And I realize that the area that was once known as Province is a retirement community, which was just picked up after having come out of bankruptcy from Elliott Homes. It is in Australia, and it additionally, I'm sure, is on smaller lots and caters specifically to retired people over fifty-five and empty nesters. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Should I give my view lecture or the Dave Horstman view lecture? I think not. I, I'm going to do this, I don't like to do this, but my predecessor as chairman of the commission, who is back in Virginia, Dave Horstman, when people came up to us and commented on the fact that they're going to lose their view, you didn't buy a view. I apologize. I don't, I know you do not like to hear what I'm saying. However, you bought a view of the golf course. You still live on a golf course. You didn't buy, you know, we tell people who are losing their mountain views that that's not what was sold, and the salesman may have told you that, and you wanted to believe it, and we all want to believe what we like. But however, you bought a piece of property, and your property is not being infringed on by this development. And that's all I'm going to say on this matter. And this is, has been what the commission has said many, many, many years in a row. And I'm just, I'm not inventing this. I'm just saying what has been said before. You can go into the minutes and look back five, six, seven years ago and see that we had the same position.
I would add that when I bought my property, there were not many homes around me, and I had a fabulous view of the white tanks, and the salesman said to me, it won't be there when the rest of the unit is developed, and sure enough, so, you know, at least I had an honest salesman.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a little different because you knew, just like I knew, that I wasn't going to maintain the view, but they didn't know that.
I'm sorry, they did know that. That, this has always been plotted.
Who is the "they"? Are we talking about these homeowners?
Yes. This has always been plotted for thirty-three hundred homes in this whole area, and the density is being shrunk from thirty-three to twenty-two hundred. So I, I think they were well aware because as long as I've been on the commission, we have known that this area was going to be developed. All of these parcels had plans on them. Some of them not as nice as what Newland is doing. The previous owner was not nearly as, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion on this case, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case zero-nine dash two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero-one-one.
Right. I have a motion from Vice Chair Lox, and I have a second from Commissioner Ryan Peters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm, I'm on the fence here with this one. I really am, because I understand their point of view.
I, I can emphasize. So would you like to be a nay vote?
I will be a nay vote.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Gelsner?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, can you make sure that reads with the change in stipulation number five?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That would have been, that's what I meant.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, that was stipulation five is final plat, not preliminary plat. All right? Thank you. Second, okay? All right. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm going to open the case zero-nine-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-five, Quick Trip at Australia Crossroads Rezone. Katie, I have a question for you. Can you make the presentation on both this one and the use permit at the same time, and then we'll take separate votes on that? Is that okay?
That's what I was planning. Thank you.
That's the plan? All right. Ms. Wilkin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission. Staff has received a request from Quick Trip to locate a service station at the southeast corner of Australia Parkway and Fillmore, just north of the existing Australia Crossroads commercial development north of the subway building. Approximately half of the proposed site is Zone C2, which is about this area right here. The north half of the site is located within the Australia Commons P.A.D., and that piece of property is permitted for commercial uses in the Australia Commons P.A.D., but the P.A.D. does not permit service stations or convenience stores. And so they're required to rezone to C2 to accommodate the service station. The site is surrounded by commercial uses to the south and west, proposed high-density residential to the north, and medium-density residential to the east on the north portion of the site. The application is proposing rezoning the north half of the property to C2 so that the whole entire property would then become a part of the Australia Crossroads commercial development. Concurrent with the rezone request, the applicant has also filed for a use permit to, to permit, to permit an automotive service station. The use would include a five thousand square foot retail convenience grocery store and ten, ten gas pumps located under a canopy. The site is located within the city center gateway overlay district. Automotive service stations located within the overlay district must undergo an expanded site plan review process. The overlay district requires enhanced architecture and site design to ensure that development is high-quality, well-planned, and creates a distinct character. The applicant has provided a conceptual site plan and elevations for the proposed use. And you can see, here's the site plan. There is a signal planned for the corner of Australia and Fillmore, and the site will be able to be accessed from both Australia Parkway and two access points on Fillmore Street. The Quick Trip gas convenience store can also accommodate a rear entrance, which they may put in in the future when the residential to the rear of the store develops. The preliminary elevations they've provided do show enhanced architecture. They're not including the illuminated red band that you may remember from various Quick Trips. They are having a red band, but it's not illuminated, and they have provided a nice architecture in the front and the rear. And you can see that they've also provided articulation and an enhanced canopy for the gas station pumps. The narrative also states that the applicant will provide enhanced landscaping and architecture, which will be reviewed in detail during the expanded site plan review process. And staff will ensure that there is conformance with the overlay district design guidelines during the site plan review process. Staff recommends approval of the rezone and use permit subject to the recommended stipulations. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to the applicant.
Questions of staff? Questions, staff, staff. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, Katie, this page one here says one point six acres, but the narrative says two point five, and the use permit says two point five.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner Williams. The entire site to be developed is two point five acres that the service station will sit on, but a portion of the property is already Zone C2, so only one point six acres of the two point five needs to be rezone.
Thank you.
Katie, sign package. Will they have to come back for, to us for a sign package? Or is, or is the conceptual designs part of the sign, the site plan approval, is that part of the, is, you know, do they ever have a separate sign package?
They're, they will be considered part of Australia Crossroads commercial development, so they will need to follow the guidelines of the Australia Crossroads comprehensive sign package and the design guidelines for Australia Crossroads.
So, so we will not see any illuminated canopy price signs on this service station? Is that correct?
Not unless they propose amending the sign ordinance, but they haven't expressed any desire for that to the, to staff.
Bad idea. Don't do it. Okay. Any other questions of staff? I have one applicant. Sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. I'm representing Evergreen DevCo and also Quick Trip. We certainly appreciate staff's recommendations for approval on both the C2 and the use permit. We agree with their analysis. We agree with their findings, and we request your commission's approval in accordance with staff's recommendations. I know that we have at least one speaker here tonight to express concerns, so recognizing that, if I may, I'd like to make a quick overview of what we're here to discuss, answer questions if you have them, and then reserve some time for rebuttal if that would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
As staff discussed, the site is located at the intersection of an arterial street, which happens to be Australia Parkway, and a collector. That intersection will be signalized in the future. It is clearly an appropriate location for commercial use, and it is something that we believe is most appropriately integrated with the existing C2 development that's to the immediate south. That's why we're in a situation where we have a particular site that's, while it's only two and a half acres, it has two zoning districts on it. It has C2 on the south, and it has P.A.D. for the district, which normally allows commercial uses on the north. It makes the most sense to combine that into one zoning district, and we believe it makes the most sense to make that one zoning district C2 so that this parcel can be integrated with the C2 development that is to our immediate south, which of course is Australia Crossroads. Recognizing that it's appropriate for commercial on this frontage, which is at a signalized intersection, and recognizing that C2, we believe, and staff agrees, is the most appropriate zoning, we can discuss that in more detail if you want, but I expect part of what we're going to hear more about tonight are concerns with the use permit, and that, as you know, both C2 and the city center overlay allow automobile service stations subject to a use permit. And as staff has addressed in their staff report at pages four and five, they believe, and we agree, that we certainly satisfy the tests for a use permit, and that we're not materially detrimental to neighboring persons or properties, and we're compatible with other uses that can exist or can be provided in the area. Again, I can talk more about that if you'd like, but certainly the staff report and the findings at page four and five of the, of the use permit staff report go into that in some detail. As does the staff report at pages five and six, talking about the additional evaluation criteria. We recognize those criteria, and it's things that Katie touched on, has been addressed through various modifications that have been made from a prototype through architectural enhancements and various movements that occur, architectural treatments, use of colors, other kinds of things to make sure that this particular facility is integrated with the commercial development to the south in terms of vehicular connections, pedestrian connections, and also with some common architectural compatibility with some features being commonplace between what exists and what's proposed. Again, we can get into more detail on that if you would like, but we believe that staff, in their staff reports on both the C2 and on the use permit staff reports, did a very good job of analyzing why they believe C2 makes the most sense, and why they believe that the use permit tests and the additional evaluation criteria have been satisfied. And again, if you want, I can go into more details. There's certainly people here with me from, from Evergreen and from Quick Trip can go into additional detail if you'd like as well. In dealing with this particular site, again, we believe it's, it's important that we recognize where we are, the fact that it's a signalized intersection, and we will be integrated with an existing center to the south. The criteria are satisfied. The additional details will be worked with staff through the site plan review processes, and as Katie indicated, those processes will get into the kind of details that are appropriate with respect to landscaping, signage, other kinds of issues that, that, that of course, site plan approval is appropriate for. We believe this makes a great deal of sense. We believe it's in a location where the use and the zoning and the use permit make good sense, and the criteria are satisfied. Again, through use of the exhibits or other discussions, we will be happy to get into additional detail now if you'd like, and as well, if you would like to hear from Laura Ortiz or Kelly Hayes from Evergreen, who you may remember from, from Goodyear, Goodyear Center Point and other developments, or if you want to hear from either Rodney Lloyd or Juan Romero from Quick Trip, they're here as well. Any of us and all of us will do our best to answer any questions you have or provide you with any additional detail that you may desire this evening.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Williams?
If, if not, then, as I indicated, I'd like to reserve a bit of time for rebuttal.
Ed, you can come back. I promise.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. I have one comment card. Roger Matlin. Roger, you can speak a reasonable amount of time on both issues, please. Okay? So I'm not going to give you two shots at the apple. You get one.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Gelsner. The reason I'm speaking on this tonight is because after reading some documentation on the internet and looking at this project, I do have some concerns. First off, I will note that primary concerns have to do with the fact that you're approving a gas station along Australia Parkway that is on the northbound traffic, which gives nice, easy access to the freeway, criminals, and everyone else that wants to get loaded in the parking lot of a gas station and take off and jump on the freeway. I don't think that's a great idea, and I'd like to be sure that this project produces enough revenue, or that the developers want to put up the revenue to assure that there is enough police protection for this site in the event that these type of things happen. I bring this up simply because I've underwritten many gas stations. The closer they are to the freeway like this one is, the more crime they're guaranteed to have. On that same token, Quick Trip, I know, is a very reputable organization and does a very good job in, in operating their, their stations as well as their food marks. My next big concern is the putting in of a stoplight and the traffic that's going to be generated by it. As many of you know and as I hear constantly, Goodyear has put in a number of stoplights along Australia Parkway. What used to take about ten to twelve minutes to get from Australia Mountain down to the Safeway or down to the Walmart, now takes somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty minutes, constantly stopping at stoplights in the middle of nowhere that are going red and, or don't seem to be controlled at all. Putting in another stoplight in a location like this, I don't think is a wise idea. And I don't think it's really necessary. If they're going to have access off of Fillmore Road, there's no reason to do it, and I would ask that maybe the applicant consider not having that put in. And then finally, my, my biggest issue here is, I read the agenda, as you have here and had on the internet. I, I read the package on the internet as well, and I also consulted with Maricopa County and the state of Arizona. And one of my issues is, is that you note under case zero-nine dash two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero-one-five that the subject property, subject to this public subject to this public hearing, is 1.6 acres generally located at the southeast corner of Van Buren Street and Fillmore Street. Well, Van Buren is approximately a half mile south of Fillmore Street and is parallel to Fillmore, and therefore, this does not meet the requirement of public notice, according to the state of Arizona, and proper public notice. Now, the package has maps in it that show the property, but because this does not match up, and it also does not match up under case 09-300-00004, it again states a similar situation where it notes located at the southeast corner of Van Buren Street and Fillmore Street, that this does not meet the requirements of a properly provided public notice for people to come out and speak on the subject. In addition, I know that they are required to give notification to the neighboring property owners within a certain distance, but because the definition here on the agenda, as it is placed on this public notice, is different than what it states in some other parts of the package, it is not clear whether or not proper notice was given to the property owners within 500 feet, and therefore, would also not meet the requirements of a properly provided public notice for this case. So I would ask that you postpone it until those items can be corrected, and until it has met the legal requirements of the state of Arizona.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can we get some staff input here, or do we need to call the lawyers?
No, we know the answer. We don't need attorneys.
I think you turned your microphone off, Mr. Schmitz.
Chairman Gelsner, Mr. Matlin is correct that it was incorrect on the agenda that was posted online. Apparently, the mistake, though, was in the actual notice that was published, and that's a bigger problem than what clerical error on the agenda page. So we would recommend that we continue the item, not take action on it tonight, continue with public hearing, but then postpone it so that we can renotice it for the next meeting.
Okeydokey. I thought we were going to go that way. I'm going to continue the public hearing so we can get as much comment as we can get. Mr. Dustin Jones would like to speak, and you're going to get one chance to address both issues.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Pleasure to be with you this evening to talk about this case, and the reason I'm here on this case, and it's kind of funny, I do have to have the record reflect that I'm the first time on the same side as Roger Matlin in opposition to something, and that doesn't happen very often. But this time, the reason for my being here is I wanted to talk about policy. Mr. Matlin's done a thorough job of looking at the application and going through the various details on the case. My concerns that I expressed to you, as noted in the letter that you have before you, as well as the outline, more deal with the policy decision that has to be made by the commission and the council ultimately if the rezoning is to occur on the site. With a rezoning application, obviously, the request is before you because there's a proposed land use change. I don't know if you have the table, the colored table in front of you? I'm going to use this sort of as an outline to kind of talk about where the history of my feelings are with respect to this corridor. As many of you are aware, I served on the planning commission, and back in 2002, I served as the vice chair when the overlay district was approved, and there was considerable amount of discussion about the Astoria Parkway and its importance in the eyes of the city as we developed along this corridor. This was well before the Walmart Center was built, this was well before the baseball was even a twinkle in anyone's eyes along Astoria Parkway, but there was a desire to enhance the visibility and protect the streetscape along Astoria Parkway. And I've got, I don't know if I can have Elmo come on here, this is, what I did was I went and got the minutes of the meeting of 2002, August of 2002, and you can see, I highlighted some of the notables who are still in the room. Gary Gelsner, at the time, was a member of the audience, and he was noted there in attendance. As I said, I've served as the chair. Kevin Kugler, who's here in the audience, was in the meeting. Karen Keith, who works with me. Harvey Kraus and Joe Brooks, Joe's not here tonight. But many of those who are in this room tonight understand and were part of those discussions that we talked about, the importance of this corridor. And some of the things we talked about are, quite frankly, not being respected, as I see this application's going forward this evening, for a gas station along Astoria Parkway. If you look at Astoria Parkway from McDowell Road all the way down, there are no gas stations that front on to Astoria Parkway, except for the Safeway, the Safeway Gas Station. That was an application that was grandfathered in because of a development agreement that prohibited the city from imposing new standards on that development to allow for the gas station. At the time that that was built, there was much consternation about the fact that there would be a gas station fronting on Astoria Parkway. I've represented some other developers along Astoria Parkway who were expressly told by staff that they couldn't put a gas station on Astoria Parkway. That was kind of a sacred cow, and the gas stations and auto-related uses would not be permitted. You've got in front of you a outline, a chart that goes through the chronology of all the different approvals. The first portion you see in front of you is, are the four public hearings that were held on the overlay district. There were two, one went to council, there were two work sessions, or one went to planning commission, two work sessions before city council, and then ultimately, the last meeting when the city council approved it. And again, it was all talking about and speaking to the uniformity along the corridor of Astoria Parkway. There also were cases in 2004 where this commission and council had a lot of discussion about drive-throughs along Astoria Parkway, and then why would you orient a drive-through along Astoria Parkway? I would have to submit that if a drive-through of any type of a fast food type of restaurant is a concern, an automobile-related gas station generates even more cars on fronting in and out, coming in and out on Astoria Parkway. That concern and the desire and the intent of the overlay at the time it was being proposed was to create an urban corridor of aesthetic significance, not auto-dominated. Now, there is no express prohibition in the overlay district that says you can't have any, but if you are going to do anything that's auto-related, or it's going to have a drive-through, you have to come through the planning commission. So while the, a portion of the site where the QuickTrip would like to be located, which is zone C2, which allows for gas stations, could have a gas station, it still would be subject to a use permit, because the council wanted those types of uses to come before the commission and council in terms of whether those are the appropriate locations for that. When the ordinance was adopted, the overlay ordinance, and these other sites along Astoria Parkway were zoned, it was understood that there weren't going to be any other locations for gas stations fronting on Astoria Parkway. Everything had been zoned. The C2's allowed for it, but you could have a use permit if you wanted to, but all the parcels were developed, and there weren't going to be any gas stations. On the opposite side of the street, but for the Safeway Gas Station, it was part of a development agreement that was grandfathered, there aren't any gas stations going towards Walmart. There just aren't any. So, much of the desire of the city to plan that corridor, during the process, we extended the overlay district, which started at the freeway and went south, there was a point when we extended it all the way up to McDowell, and the staff report is very, very clear, the reason why that was done was to be able to create a connection between the mall and the city center, that whole entire corridor. There was no policy change that, well, gas stations might be allowed north of Van Buren and not south, because that's the city center. It was a connection, very clearly in the staff report, in the minutes of the meeting, that there was a desire to extend it north, going towards the mall to connect the mall and the city center. That whole corridor was sacred, in the sense of creating a streetscape, and auto types of uses were not allowed. What's before you, again today, is a proposal to change that. Astoria Commons was a development that came through, you can see in the application and the outline I have before you, it was approved in 2006. In its application, it speaks to the overlay district and the desire to have a very integrated, mixed-use cohesive type of development, consistent with the overlay, consistent with the city's vision for that area. That's why in that application, and if I can have Elmo again, in the prohibited uses, in the prohibited uses of Astoria Commons, and you can't see it here because of, it's not listed, but items number 19 and 21 were expressly called out in prohibited uses. The first ones is a gas station, the others, convenience stores. At the time of the zoning of this property, the vision was understood, it was very, very clear, this came after the overlay district and after all of the council meetings, talking about this corridor, the gas stations fronting on Astoria Parkway were not prohibited, were not going to be permitted as a matter of right, and definitely, you'd have to come back and get a use permit, but it was understood that there weren't going to be that many of them along that corridor. There have been others that have attempted, have asked, have approached me, and I said, no, I don't think that's going to happen. I've talked to staff, staff says, no, not along that corridor. My history, my recollection of all the meetings that I attended when I voted in favor of this, when I was a part of the commission, other meetings I've attended, were other cases that had come before you, Panda Express being one of them, where it had a drive-through, and this commission, as well as council, had concerns about it, were those auto-related types of uses on Astoria Parkway. When you make a decision to rezone or grant a use permit, I think it's incumbent upon the applicant to make the argument that if you're changing the policy, you're changing the zoning, that you have met the standards to change that. This isn't just a use permit, this is Astoria Parkway, and the use permit is required because of the overlay district. It's not the same test. The argument needs to be made by the applicant as to why the city should change the policy and allow for these types of auto-related, and expressly why the zoning application and the zoning that's approved on the site by the same developer that prohibited them at one time is now allowing for those uses now. The language is clear in the PAD that was approved, talking about the integrated uses, pedestrian types of uses, walkability, commercial cores, mixed use, and to put a gas station there is inconsistent with the vision that I believe this commission and the council ultimately adopted. Now, this is my position, as I've reviewed the minutes of the various meetings, I have copies of the staff reports at the time, I have not had an opportunity to speak to the applicant on this case, was not aware that they were represented by council or would have met with them. I don't know that my position would have changed any on this case, because my recollection, having attended all four of the public hearings at the time, are very, very clear. There isn't a gas station along Astoria Parkway for a reason, because it's the corridor. There is a reason why it was extended northwards towards the mall to create that cohesiveness and the streetscape and the urban streetscape. If you look at the overlay district, there are specific requirements that require the massing of the buildings along the street, the minimization of parking spaces and the lots, not having a sea and ocean of parking and parking lot and auto types of uses on that streetscape. So I submit to you that this application is inappropriate at any time along Astoria Parkway. There aren't any other locations along Astoria Parkway that I'm aware of that a gas station could be permitted. C2 is appropriate in certain areas, but C2 along Astoria Parkway is not appropriate, and it's absolutely not appropriate when the PAD for the development's expressly prohibited at the time, because it was consistent with the vision and the intent of the overlay district.
Mr. Bull, how about a brief rebuttal? And then we're going to close the public hearing and take a continuance on this agenda
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that the city's policy is expressly set forth in the city's adopted overlay and adopted C2 zoning district. I appreciate that there may have been discussions of this or that, or what may or may not have been appropriate on this site versus that site, of course, varies from site to site. But again, what will be a signalized intersection on a site that can be integrated with a C2 development to our immediate south. The overlay that was referenced, if Elmo is on, expressly provides, and I don't know if this shows on your screen or not, but it expressly provides in the overlay that automobile service stations are allowed under the overlay so long as you get a use permit. That is identical to the city's adopted C2 zoning district, which again provides that automotive service stations are allowed in C2, subject to a use permit. And certainly, C2 is every bit as appropriate on the northern acre and a half or so of this site as it is on the rest of the site and all the way down to Van Buren. Integrating this center makes a tremendous amount of sense with a single use on this remaining parcel under one zoning district, which should be C2 rather than have it split in half. We recognize that, and I fully appreciate that you suggested I be brief, and I don't think you want me to go into anything and everything that may or may not have been discussed on other sites or by other developers at other locations. I will tell you, though, that on the side of the street that we're talking about, this being the subject property we're talking about tonight, but this is built through here. There is a drive-through on the west end of this building, we processed the use permit on it that was approved by the commission and council. This is a bank with drive-throughs that were approved through the commission and council, Walgreens with a drive-through approved through the commission and council, and as you know, the overlay is not only right along the Astoria Road frontage, but is also 660 feet east and west of the frontage. Fletcher's is clearly an automotive-related facility, there again, use permit for that that was approved through the commission and council processes. And as you know, there is a service station across the street, right in this area to the west, that was done correctly so as a part of the Safeway facility. That service station, I believe by definition, is a good use in this corridor that's compatible with other uses in the corridor, which goes exactly to the use permit tests that are expressly adopted in your ordinances. We appreciate that sometimes different developers get in a tug-of-war over whether a user is going to land on this site and on another site, and we appreciate when a user opts to land on Evergreen's site, maybe others are disappointed in that, but that doesn't change it to a land use issue. The land use issue, we believe, is vited for in your adopted ordinances. We agree with staff's findings and analysis indicating that we've satisfied those tests, and that this is an appropriate location to have a slight increase in the amount of C2 and to put the use permit on the entire two and a half acres, recognizing there's stipulations that will assure compatibility, and there will, of course, be detailed site plan review. We know we're getting continued tonight, but when we're back, we will request your approval in accordance with staff's recommendations.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Any questions of Mr. Bull? All right, you're done. Any questions of Mr. Jones or Mr. Matlin? Okay, you guys are done.
Do we have a hearing date? I'm sorry.
You're going to be continued to the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Are we going to have enough time to notify, put notices in?
Yeah, I believe the next meeting would be January 20th, so that gives us time to republish.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on case 09-200-00015. QuickTrip at Australia Crossroads Rezone, can I have a motion to continue, please?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller, second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for case 09-300-00004. QuickTrip at Australia Use Permit. Does anybody want to make a statement? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion to continue. Commissioner Miller?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, 5-0. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing for case 08-200-00006. Sierra Vista Foothills Rezone. Katie Wilkin is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission. Staff received a request to amend the Astoria Phase II final PAD zoning to facilitate the development of Sierra Vista Foothills Master Plan Community. Sierra Vista Foothills is 288 acres located adjacent to the Astoria Mountain Ranch Regional Park, between Williams Field Road and Pico's Road alignments, and between Cotton Lane and Reams Road alignments. The property was zoned Astoria Phase II final PAD in 1988. This property was later part of a land swap transaction between Amcor and the BLM, and the property went into possession of the BLM. The property was auctioned in 2007, at which time Voyager Investment acquired the property. The current final PAD zoning allows for the development of 1,896 dwellings and 21 acres of commercial on the subject property. of commercial on the subject property. The proposed amendment would allow for 1,219 units at an average density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre, decreasing the total lot count by 677 dwellings. 8.2 acres of commercial is proposed within Sierra Vista Foothills. 42 acres of open spaces provided, including a 10-acre park site. The PAD proposes single-family development on 55-foot to 65-foot wide lots, a cluster or courtyard home product, and multifamily residential. Development standards are provided within the PAD and provide for quality residential development. Staff recommends approval of the PAD amendment, which will decrease the density and provide enhanced development within the community. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions of staff? Okay, applicant, Mr. Googler, do you want to make a presentation?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, just real briefly, it's a pleasure to be here once again before you. We certainly appreciate staff's findings. We concur with their recommendations. Katie, as usual, and all of staff have been a pleasure to deal with in this particular case, and I think Katie aptly hit it on the button. This case really is akin to a down zone in many respects. The zoning has been in place and somewhat antiquated since the late 80s, and Voyager Properties has had an opportunity to pick up the parcel, as you mentioned, from BLM, and has the opportunity to pretty much modernize and make this property more contemporary in terms of its land use planning. We have a density and a unit count that's over a 33% reduction on the property. We have four times the open space that the parcel had before. So again, we appreciate staff's favorable recommendation and respectfully request commission's favorable recommendations as well. Mr. Mark Voight with Voyager Properties is available, as am I, should you have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any questions of the applicant? Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve case number 08200006.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Peters and a second from Commissioner Williams. Comments from the commission? It looks like an improvement from the chairman's point of view. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, 5-0. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on case 092200009, a zoning ordinance text amendment. And I believe Mr...
Schmitz.
Schmitz is going to make the presentation instead of Mr. Burningham, who went home.
Mr. Chairman, commission members standing in for Garette. He was feeling under the weather, so I let him go after he covered his first item, and I'm familiar with this item, so I'd be happy to present it to you tonight. Section, Article 76B of the zoning ordinance deals with placement of signs, particularly signs within street right of... General provision regarding the placement of signs specifically prohibits placement of signs in public right-of-way and public or public-owned property. With a few exceptions, those include the residential kiosk sign program that we have to direct people to subdivisions, the monument sign program, which you all are familiar with, entry monument signs, signs on bus bays, and then signs to identify public buildings and uses, and signs for traffic control. This generally provides adequately for the placement of publicly-owned sign, but it doesn't include a provision that would even allow the city to consider the placement of privately-owned signs. And there are some instances that occur where doing something like that may be appropriate. And to help you visualize the situation, this is an instance, if I could zoom it here, where's the zoom? Where's the zoom on this thing? Oh, it's up there. No wonder. Now do I get rid of that other stuff now? Well, I'm struggling tonight. There we go.
I want to push that up. Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
This is an instance at Pebble Creek Parkway and Indian School Road where you have a commercial site that's located at the northeast corner, but between the commercial site and the right-of-way for Indian School Road itself is a drainage channel that is about 50 feet wide. And it's a publicly-owned and maintained drainage channel. Now, had this been like a private tract and that was incorporated as part of the development, then the signs would be placed at the usual, monument signs would be placed at the usual location, which would be about five feet behind the right-of-way line. But in this instance, if you place the monument identification sign for the, or multi-tenant sign for the center, if you place it on the property itself, it's more than 55 feet away from where, or 50 feet more than where it would normally be located. As the zoning ordinance stands right now, there isn't even a way to kind of consider this type of a situation. The proposed change would modify the language and create the opportunity for those types of signs to be considered. And this is just not an isolated location. There are other locations in the city where you may have either a publicly-owned tract or a privately-owned tract in between the property and the road right-of-way. So the ordinance proposal for change is that in certain instances, the city can grant a license to an abutting property owner for use of property that abuts the owner's property for the placement of signs that would otherwise be permitted by the ordinance if they were constructed on the property owner's property, but only under certain circumstances. And the circumstances are listed in the ordinance and outlined in your staff support, that there's unique circumstances or conditions of the lot building or traffic pattern that the existing sign regulations create an undue hardship, that there's unique circumstances or conditions that were not self-created or self-imposed, that the granting of the license compensates for those unique circumstances in a manner that's equitable with other property owners. What did I do? And that the license is the minimum amount of relief necessary to compensate for the unique circumstances, that it cannot interfere in any way, shape, or form with other traffic signs and/or the use of the property for which it was obtained. So in this instance, if the sign placement location would interfere with the use as a drainage channel, then it wouldn't be allowed. And then lastly, any sign would not be allowed to obstruct traffic signs or interfere with pedestrian vehicle or traffic. The second change that's being proposed is into the definition of off-site sign. And the reason that we included that as well is that this type of a placement of a sign on a private tract that's perhaps not under the same ownership as the adjoining parcel would be considered an off-site sign, but we've changed the definition to say in that circumstance where it's on the immediately adjacent property, it would not be considered Another example of that situation would be, and this occurs relatively frequently, sometimes, well, it occurs relatively frequently. A lot of times, a shopping center will start out as a single unit, and then parcels get created. In this instance, this is Cornerstone. This is the Lowe's property. But Lowe's is displayed, their name is displayed on the multi-tenant sign out at McDowell Road and also on Dicert, and the signs are actually located on a separate piece of property. So in those instances, we don't feel that it's fair to consider that an off-site sign, which would otherwise not be allowed. So the two changes that are proposed are an attempt to correct those situations. And that concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions of staff? Questions? Question? Question? I have one, just a clarification. If the person or the entity is entitled to a multi-tenant sign on their property and this sign moves to an adjacent city-owned property, they don't get a duplicate, they don't get two signs, right? They're entitled to one sign, we're just allowing them to move it to a more appropriate location adjacent to the roadway. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, Chairman Gelsner. It's not a second sign. It is just a modification of the location.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion on case 092200009, zoning ordinance text amendment.
Mr. Chairman Gelsner, I recommend, we recommend approval, our move, we recommend approval of case number 092200009, amendment of Article 7-6-B and 7-5.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams and a second for Vice Chair Lox. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, 5-0. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on case 09500005, Pebble Creek Phase 2, units 42, 42A, and 49 preliminary plat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a preliminary plat for three units within Pebble Creek, located, this is Indian School Road, Saraval. We're located along the west side of Saraval. Surrounding these proposed units is mostly existing or proposed Pebble Creek development. Tuscany Falls down here, existing residential, proposed residential here to the west, the golf yard, maintenance yard right there. 286 single-family lots are proposed within these three units. Density is 3.1 dwelling units per acre. Lot sizes are typical of what's been proposed and developed within Pebble Creek. With our review, staff has found that the open space is, within Phase 2, is required to be 20%. These three units are not providing 20%, but staff and the applicant have been keeping track as the units within this phase have developed. Right now, they're well over 20%, and staff will continue to monitor open space as the phase continues to build out. Staff does find that the proposed preliminary plat is consistent with our subdivision regulations, is consistent with the Pebble Creek PAD. We are recommending approval, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Staff is available for any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Questions of staff?
Yes, Steve, explain, I'm sorry, explain stipulation 20 to me. What is a key lot?
All right, one of those technical questions.
Kind of like right here, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams. This lot here backs up to another lot here, so you don't want the subdivision wall for this lot. The idea is you don't want this subdivision wall to block the visibility of this lot as this person is backing out of their driveway.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions, comments? Does the applicant want to make a comment?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay. Then the chairman will make a comment. Noted for the public record that Unit 49 has been developed with Luke noise contours intact, and as a result of negotiations between the Robson Corporation and the City of Goodyear, the golf course is to the northwest of Unit 49 and not, and Unit 49 does not extend to into the noise zone and adjacent to the RV storage lot. Any other comments? Seeing anybody from the public like to make a comment? Roger? Mr. Matlin?
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner. For the record, Roger Matlin, Goodyear. Actually, on this, you're going to hear something you don't often hear from me. After reading the staff report online and looking at all the presentations and the entire report, I thought it was outstandingly well-done and very clear, and I hope to see every report that comes in front of you in the future for every development look this professionally well-done. So, thank you to staff and to everyone up here on the commission. Happy holidays.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Matlin. We appreciate your comments, and I'm sure the applicant and staff appreciates your compliments on the presentation. All right. Closing the public hearing, can I have a motion on case 09500005, as announced by the chairman earlier?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 09-500-00005, subject to the stipulations.
I have a second.
I have a motion from the vice chair. I have a second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, 5-0. All right, staff communications.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple, very briefly, besides that, a couple of comments. Let you know that the Madera General Plan Amendment rezoning and development agreement were approved by the city council, mayor and council, on Monday, this past Monday evening. Also, the update to the general plan circulation element was also approved by the city council. And this past Monday, four commission members were reappointed. Commissioner Miller, Lox, and Williams, and Laurentano were reappointed to the Planning Commission for another three-year term. And lastly, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and wish you the best in the new year.
Thank you, same to you.
Thank you, same to you.
All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, we...